Six thirty-two, Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty-two. Next, a pledge of the alleging lead by council member Manchaca.
Manchaca, thank you. Okay, please stand, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Manchaca.
Here.
Okay, we will now have the some announcement from our chief city clerk.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
First, approve of the agenda order. There any objection to the agenda order?
None.
None? Okay, here's none, the agenda order is approved. No, no vote needed, right? Okay.
That's right, you can go on to presentation.
Okay, next item.
Presentation A, proclaiming February as Black History Month. Vice Mayor Ding will make the presentation.
Okay. Program, proclamation for this year, this month is a Black history month. Whereas much of the city of the San Gabriel honor, strength in the discussion can, can be attributed to the diversity of the cultural and traditions that are celebrated by our residents. And whereas African American have played a significant role in the his, history of our nation and California economic, cultural, speech and political development while walking tirelessly to promote their culture and history. And whereas as a result of their determination, hard work and preservates, events, events, African American have made variable and lasting contribution to our community and our state. Achieving exception success in all aspect of the so, society including business, education, politics, science and arts. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, Black History, Black History Month was formally adopted by honor and affirmed the importance of the Black history throughout our American experience. And it's full of individual who took a stance against the pre justice, advanced the cause of civil rights, strengthened the families, communities and our nation. And whereas all Americans encouraged to reflect on past success and the challenges of African American and look to the future, future to improve. Society so set we live up to ideals of freedom, equ, equity and justice. Now, therefore, I, Tony Ding, Vice Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of the city council, council member John R. Harrington and Denise Manchaca, do hereby proclaim, proclaim February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month in the City of San Gabriel. And invite everyone to recognize this month to celebrate the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of the sharing our cultural custom and the tradition with those around us. I urge the city of this, citizen of the San Gabriel to join me in this special observance date, February first, twenty twenty-two.
So. Item B, introduction of new information technology manager David Suein, Finance Director Kahola Kula will make the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I am extremely pleased to introduce to you the city's new IT manager, David Suein. David comes from us from the city of Montebello, where he helped build the city's IT infrastructure. The last six years at the city of Montebello, David held the position of IT manager. David has a bachelor's degree in geological science from Whittier College. And he has a master's in information systems from the University of Phoenix. Please join me in welcoming David Suein to the San Gabriel team.
Welcome, David.
Well, thank you, sir, for the wonderful introduction. Good evening, council member and staffs. I wanted to thank the San Gabriel staff for giving me the opportunity to serve the, the San Gabriel community. As you had mentioned, I have been a public servant for almost twenty years. I am honored to be part of this community and to be able to be a great, hardworking IT team in San Gabriel. So if there is any questions or any help with IT, please grab one of our team and we'll be there to help you. Again, thank you and have a great night.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I, thank you, David. Probably I, I will maybe call you a lot.
Okay.
Regard.
Okay, no problem.
COVID nineteen update. Presentations will be made by Fire Chief Wallace and Police Chief Harris.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Ding and members of the city council. I am Steve Wallace, Fire Chief for the City of San Gabriel. And tonight I'll be presenting you thankfully a brief update on COVID and its impact on fire department operations in our city. As of Tuesday, February first, there were eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six new cases reported across LA County and thirty-seven new deaths. On Monday's fire chief's call with the EMS agency, it suggested and we're starting to see it in the data and indicators that we're past the peak of this winter surge. Indicators include the number of cardiac arrests we're responding to, the number of respiratory distress calls we're responding to. And interestingly enough, monitoring of wastewater for COVID and Omicron viruses is all steadily declining. So that's all good news. Other indicators that suggest a downward trend of the test positivity rate, which was over twenty percent a week ago, is down to twelve point four seven percent today. The hospitalizations are down to just over thirty-seven hundred from a high of forty-eight hundred a week ago. So all the indicators are leading down and showing that we're, we're making it past this winter surge. In the city of San Gabriel, we now have a total of six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six cases, which is up a whopping two hundred and eighty since just last week. And I'm sad to report that we've had two additional deaths in the city for a total of two hundred and twenty-five deaths since the pandemic started. Our skilled nursing facilities are showing some infections. However, this is a trailing number in the, in the data. So what we're looking at is the peak of the winter surge. There were twenty-two staff and thirty-one residents infected. Should be noted, they were all vaccinated. And thankfully, we have no deaths to report in our skilled nursing facilities. And these numbers encompass seven facilities in the city. As far as the fire department, we are finally at a point where we have zero members infected. We had a total of seven during the surge and right now we have everybody at a hundred percent healthy. We're delivering our services at a hundred percent. We've got no supply nature, supply chain issues with any of our medications or equipment. And we're still experiencing some minor delays in the transfer of care at hospitals, but nothing like we were seeing a few weeks ago when we were waiting sometimes an hour, hour and a half or two hours to transfer patients from our gurney into dependent of care in our local hospitals. As always, the fire department staff is vigilantly monitoring the data and trends and we will certainly bring to you any emerging patterns and concerns that need your attention as necessary. And that's my end of report for the evening.
Thank you, Chief Wallace.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I am the Chief of the City of San Gabriel. And this will be a brief COVID update from the police department, very brief. Now, we are still at one hundred percent service capacity. Now, we've had no perfect interruption, but regardless of our field service. And we encourage you both to make sure that they are adhering to the CDC and local county government's rules as we continue forward. And we are instructing our personnel to make sure that we are adhering to the rules and masking and recognizing social distancing as still in effect.
It's not right now, but it might come on if we ask.
So we are looking forward to anybody who has any questions. You can still give us a call at our community engagement bureau. You can reach out to me directly if you have any questions. But again, we are one hundred percent service delivery and moving forward with this. We had eight of our staff tested positive, but have so far returned back to work and have no, no ill effects. Again, we're also ready to answer any questions. Give us a call. That is my end of report.
Vice Mayor Ding, I think you've, you did.
Okay, thank you, Chief Harris. Any council member have the question for the chiefs? Okay, I saw none. And next item, please.
Vice Mayor, we have no public comment this evening.
Okay, next item, please, too.
Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Okay, is any council member like to pull out an item separate discussion?
Well, I see none, so I'm just gonna move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by council member Manchaca and the second by council member Harrington. Assistant city clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Manchaca.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of three zero.
Next item, please.
Public hearing, housing element update for the sixth cycle, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine.
It's a public hearing, it's a house element, yeah, okay. Update for the sixth circle, okay. I now open for public hearing. The staff presentation will be made by planning manager Samantha Tua.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. Item five A. It's a general plan amendment for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine six cycle housing element update. Staff's presentation this evening will be relatively brief as the city's housing consultant, Lisa Wise Consulting, Inc., LWC, will be providing a more detailed presentation of the proposed housing element update following staff's presentation. Next slide, please. Some key dates that staff did want to generally highlight is January twenty twenty-one, when the city retained the services of LWC to prepare the housing element update, followed by early public outreach in the first half of twenty twenty-one. And during this time, LWC worked on reviewing the city's existing documents as well as collecting city data. And much of this is summarized in Appendix A of the Housing Element Update. Then the drafting of the housing element immediately followed in the second half of twenty twenty-one. And on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, a joint study session was held with the Planning Commission and City Council. The draft was then revised based on all the public comments received and in November, a revised draft was made available for public review and comments. And this revised draft was also sent to the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCB, for a second review. And then on January twentieth, tenth of twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission reviewed the draft or the revised draft housing element and recommended approval to the city council with the revision to one of the housing programs which LWC will discuss as part of their presentation. Next slide, please. So the item before the city council this evening, again, is the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine six cycle housing element update. The city's current housing element covers the fifth cycle, which covers the years between twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one. And state housing laws require that the city's general plan include a housing element which must be updated periodically. And as mentioned, LWC will be going over the various components and sections of the proposed housing element, including an overview of the element itself, outreach efforts, needs, key programs and recommendations. Next slide, please. A public notification for this meeting was provided in the San Gabriel newspaper as well as posted at the, at City Hall, the post office library, and also in the dedicated webpage that was created on the city's website for this project. Next slide, please. So the recommendation before the city council this evening, after the presentation provided by LWC, is to conduct a public hearing and to discuss the proposed resolution, to adopt resolution twenty-two dash ten of the city council of San Gabriel, California, approving the proposed initial study negative declaration and the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element update and to authorize the city manager or designate to make technical changes and other non-substantive edits to the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element that may result from comments received from the Department of Housing and Community Development and their review for the final certification of the housing element without further city council consideration or re-adoption of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element update. And Vice Mayor, at this time, Jennifer Murillo, on behalf of LWC, is ready to provide the city council with that more detailed presentation of the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element update. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Samantha. Does any council member have the technical and factual question for the staff to clarify the report?
I'm sorry to cut you off, Vice Mayor Ding. We do have a, a presentation from the consultant.
Oh, I see.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Samantha. Good evening. I'm Jen Murillo with LWC. And next slide, please. We're really happy to be here before you to have you consider adoption of your twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-nine housing element. Tonight, I'll provide an overview of the housing element, including process and outreach, and talk a little bit about some high-level data and then focus on the revised draft housing element and its programs and then talk about the recommendation and next steps. Next slide. So first, we'll just talk about a quick overview. Next slide, please. Samantha mentioned the housing element is a requirement of state law. It's a required element of the city's general plan and it serves as the city's housing plan to cover an eight-year period. The housing element must be certified by the state by HCD and updated every eight years. It is required to look at an assessment of the housing needs within the community and document how this, how the city can accommodate its fair share of housing. It also functions as the city's housing action plan, identifying specific goals, policies and programs that the city will undertake. Next slide. And there are specific requirements state law has for what must be included, included in the housing element. You'll see this in the document you have before you tonight. It includes a review of your current housing elements programs, an assessment of the local housing needs. It also assesses constraints, so non-governmental and governmental constraints to the production of housing. It includes a site's inventory. This identifies available property within the city that can accommodate housing. It identifies resources available to support housing that could be programmatic and financial. And then the implementation plan, your goals, policies and programs for housing. Next slide. The state has passed and continues to pass a significant amount of legislation that affects housing and housing elements. These include a lot of more stringent and complex requirements that this housing element update is subject to that were, weren't required in previous housing element updates. We'll talk about a few of those, those tonight. But it has made this cycle far more complicated and rigorous than previous cycles if you've been at the city and gone through them before. Furthermore, I will say that the state has very recently also continued to pass new legislation, including a bill just this fall that changed the timelines and penalties related to housing element review and certification. Specifically that if the city does not have an adopted housing element that's found in substantial compliance by the state by February eleventh, the city would then only have one year to implement any rezoning required. And that one year would actually be a deadline from the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one deadline, meaning rezoning required by October fifteenth of this year. So while we are here tonight to adopt the housing element, we did just receive comments from the state just a few hours ago. The comments we've received are relatively minimal and we're scheduling a call with HCD over the next couple of days to review those and ensure we add, ensure that we adequately address their comments. So we're doing everything here we can to move forward and remain in compliance. Next slide. So I'll talk a little bit about process and outreach. And this includes, as Samantha mentioned, this has been about a year-long process. It's included outreach and involvement with the community as well as planning commission and city council and coordination with the state on reviewing the document. So over the course of that year, we've reflected comments we've heard into the housing element you see tonight. Next slide. And so specifically, these public meetings, I think, were mentioned by Samantha, but we did talk throughout the period with the commission, with the community, with our housing stakeholders, local nonprofit organizations as well as community groups to ensure that they had an opportunity to provide input and provide feedback on the housing element programs and analysis. Also, the dedicated page on the city's website has been focused on the housing element as well as supplemental email notifications, social media posts and newsletters. Next slide. And so I'll touch briefly on a few housing data points. We did talk about a handful of these at the joint session with commissions. I won't dwell on them, but rather focus on a few related to fair housing that wasn't available when we were discussion, discussing this at the joint session. And so just overall, San Gabriel does have a, a lower median income compared to the county, looking at over half of households being considered in that lower income category, meaning that they would earn less than eighty percent of the area median incomes over LA County. And San Gabriel has, is a majority renter city. Fifty-five percent of households are renters. And that's something we focus on with our process here because we do have more economic vulnerability with renters that are more subject to swings in rental markets and aren't building assets through homeownership. Next slide. And we also look at households overpaying for housing or being cost burdened. And in San Gabriel, we do see see nearly six out of ten renter households spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent and actually over thirty percent of renters being severely cost burdened, spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing. So this is a bit higher than the region overall. So we do have, we do want to focus on the cost burden being experienced in the city. Next slide. And so we do have, here are a few slides just on the fair housing related analysis and this reflects new requirements that the state issued and was released as we were already underway on this process. So we didn't have these before you previously. But I did want to discuss a few of the spatial analyses we are required to provide for fair housing and how they have resulted in some new programs that weren't included before. So the map on the left we see here looks at the percentage of non-white population in the city. And San Gabriel is a, a majority minority city, right? We have over eighty percent that's minority, largely Asian. But the portion of the city in the northwest corner, we do see a higher concentration of white population with minority percentages below eighty percent. So still a high minority population, but more of a larger white population in the northwest. The map on the right-hand side shows The map on the right-hand side shows what's called access to opportunity. This is areas described based on level of resource, with those being categories like areas with high employment rates, low poverty, proximity to jobs, high educational proficiency, limited exposure to environmental health hazards, and those factors. This is put together by the State Tax Credit Allocation Committee when they assess low-income housing tax credit allocations. So when we look at the areas that are ranked in level of resource, the area considered highest resource or having access to the most opportunity is that northwest portion of the city that does happen to have a larger proportion of white population. But the city is largely high and highest resource, so performing very well in that respect. The areas that are seeing moderate resource is the area in the south of the city adjacent to the 10 primarily. Next slide. I mentioned overpayment as a citywide issue. This is overpaying or being cost burdened for housing. We do see that now here spatially across the city for both renters and homeowners. The map on the left shows the percentage of households that are cost burdened for housing. Those are renters on the left and homeowners on the right. And you do see citywide a large proportion of households being cost burdened, but primarily in the southern portion of the city is where you see a larger concentration of households that are overpaying in a larger amount and larger proportion compared to the rest of the city. Next slide. And we also look at those at risk of displacement. And here, we see in the most of the city, pretty much the entirety of the city besides the northwest portion, having been identified as having households really at risk of displacement. And these are areas with concentrations of low or moderate-income households. That's actually the map on the left. And those with higher concentrations of non-white populations. So considering these fair housing factors and conditions, we do have some new programs we'll talk about to respond to that. Next slide. So just as a refresher, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RINA, is the target number of units that all cities must plan for in their housing element. San Gabriel has a RINA of 3,023 units, broken up into specific income categories. And again, this is the number of units that the city must be able to show it can accommodate or be planned for, not that the city must construct this number of units. Next slide. Okay, so now getting into some specifics of the revised draft housing element. Again, I mentioned that we did revise the housing element based on comments that we received throughout the process from the residents, from stakeholders, nonprofits, community groups, Planning Commission and Council, as well as from this fair housing analysis that was conducted after we presented before you at the joint session. Also with HCD comments that were received last year. Next slide. And the housing element remains organized in the same fashion as you've seen before. We've retained the same five goals and the same appendices to support the documentation and technical analysis that informs the goals, policies, and programs. Next slide. So the site's inventory is the portion of the housing element that demonstrates that the city is planning for its RINA. And there are three methods by which the city is showing that it can accommodate the RINA. It's through accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, through entitled and proposed projects, as well as through available properties, available sites. The accessory dwelling units has been, the projection for ADUs has been ratcheted back a bit based on comments we had from HCD previously. The entitled and proposed projects remains unchanged. And then the site's inventory has been revised based on comments we've received from HCD related to particularly non-vacant sites, and also from comments received from the community and Planning Commission as well. So we do have a reduced capacity in our site's inventory that has resulted in a larger shortfall in the lower-income categories, although we have excess capacity in moderate and above-moderate income capacity. Next slide, please. So as we had before, we have a rezoning program to address the shortfall in the lower-income category. And as we discussed before, we are looking at shifting some of the excess capacity we have in the moderate and above-moderate categories to the lower income. So it's the same approach we discussed previously, and looking at those lower-income sites allowing for a minimum of 30 units per acre. That is HCD's requirement to be able to categorize this lower income. And so that would be the rezoning requirement. We have a minimum of 30 units per acre, and that those sites are also at least half an acre in size. So with that rezoning program, we are looking at sufficient capacity to accommodate RINA. Next slide. And here is a map for the sites in the northern portion of the city. As I mentioned, we made some changes. Some sites have been removed, reflective of comments, and others have remained, but we've projected fewer units on some of those sites. For example, related to the parks master plan and identified park space along washes, a number of those have had reduced units projected to reflect that. The sites continue to be focused along the corridors, Las Tunas, San Gabriel, Mission District specific plan as well, and the potential sites for rezoning are identified with patching. Next slide. Similarly, in the southern portion of the city, we also have a number of sites along San Gabriel Boulevard and Valley Boulevard as well. Where the Valley Boulevard specific plan applies with higher densities, and that's where you'll see more of the blue sites identified for lower income. And these maps are all included in Appendix B of the housing element. Next slide. So we'll talk about a handful of the key programs here. Some of these will look familiar to you. The first program is the rezoning program. This is the program that does specifically address that lower-income shortfall and would direct the rezoning of those identified sites to allow for, or have a minimum density of 30 units per acre and accommodating that rezone inconsistent with state requirements. And the majority of these sites, or the potential rezoning sites, are in the C1 and C3 zone. That zone currently has a maximum density of 25 units per acre. The ADU program has remained in place with an addition for the city to monitor the production of ADUs to ensure that it's tracking with what's being projected in terms of meeting RINA. And actually, in the comments we received from HCD today, they did ask us to include a shorter timeframe for monitoring every two years instead of a midpoint check-in. So that is an edit that we would reflect in that program. And then for infrastructure, this program is to have the city pursue grants for infrastructure that can support housing development across the city. But the change here being to prioritize those applications for grants for projects that serve properties south of Las Tunas, where we're seeing a higher concentration of low and moderate-income households. Next slide. We did have comments to reevaluate the Mission District specific plan, so we've included that as a program to encourage housing and reinvestment in that area. We had public support for the enhanced density bonus, as well as the inclusionary housing program, so those have remained in place. Next slide. We did have comments, as well as from our stakeholder interviews, to include a program that addresses low-income homeownership opportunities. So a program has been added to partner with affordable housing developers or nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity to facilitate the production of these types of units. We do see here, there's a notation for change in program numbers. Here, we did have direction from Planning Commission at their hearing to remove one program we had, which was the safe parking program. In this case, we have, the city does have, based on the last point in time count, no new ones coming up, but based on the last point in time count, we did have 11 unsheltered homeless identified in San Gabriel. Of those, five were identified as living in a car, vehicle, RV, or camper. So having a safe parking program, looking for places where folks could park their vehicles for a safe place to park and stay in their vehicle, didn't seem to fit with the impact or needs in San Gabriel. So Planning Commission directed the removal and replacement of that program with other programs that address the extremely low-income category. And the city does have existing programs in the draft housing element that can address that income category. So you've seen some track changes that reflect other programs, like the single-room occupancy program and others that can meet that need. So other programs include, which you did see previously, standardizing maximum heights and eliminating the residential floor area limit. Those programs apply in the C1 and C3 zones, and again, just provide opportunity for increased development capacity to be provided for housing. Next slide. And then we have a few programs related to existing units and residents. We have adopting, the city adopting an ordinance for when apartments can be converted into condominiums to help preserve that lower-cost housing for the renters in the city. And then a program for anti-displacement information that is reflective of the homelessness response plan, but has also been expanded based on comments to ensure that, to specifically identify that resources would be multilingual and the use of local connections are used to ensure effective distribution of materials. Next slide. So then lastly, there are a few programs resulting from the fair housing analysis that are new. Those include prioritizing future parks and open space improvements in lower-opportunity areas in the southern portion of the city, and conversely, targeting housing development in the highest resource areas. So not only trying to get improvements in terms of benefits to where lower-income folks may be living, but also looking at getting housing in the places where there already is opportunity and access to in high-resource areas. And then also, looking at the area in the southern portion of the city, working with the city's commissions and gathering information on environmental health factors that are impacting those residents in the southern portion of the city to be able to assess what their issues and needs are and help to identify an action plan to address some of those issues that they may be facing. Next slide. So as Samantha mentioned, a negative declaration was prepared for this update. Its policy level, no mitigation measures are required. A subsequent sequo analysis will be done for the rezoning program, for rezoning of those sites. Next slide. Okay, so Samantha detailed the recommendation before you to adopt the negative declaration and the housing element tonight. And next slide. So we did receive the comment letter from HCD a few hours ago. As I mentioned, the comments in there are relatively minimal. We have comments asking for some additional information or some more analysis or a few tweaks to programs that I mentioned a couple in the presentation. So we are working with HCD to schedule a call, either tomorrow or the next day, to go through their comments and make sure we can adequately address those and be on the same page with any revisions to be able to be certified. So the city is really making an excellent effort with HCD to accomplish this. And I will say that many, many jurisdictions in the Southern California region are in a far less desirable position than you are all tonight. So I just want to commend the city for moving forward and doing everything possible to stay stay in compliance and as much as we can, up to date and to speed on the changing regulatory environment that we are in with this housing element. So I think, next slide, I think that is it for me. I thank you very, very much for the time and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And right now, does any council member have the technical or factual question for the staff and to clarify for the report?
I do, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So because we have those modifications now with HCD, when we move to approve, do we have to state that we approve and include the HCD's suggested modifications, or is that not necessary?
The council in Midchaka, this is Mark Lazarino. It's not necessary to do that. The recommended action that we laid out for the city council, number three, and that recommended action authorizes the city manager or designate to make those changes. So what we're asking for tonight is the leeway to work with HCD and whatever they need for us to be in compliance, we'll make those changes this week. It'll all be posted on our website, so the public will have benefit of that, and we will send it to HCD as well prior to the deadline.
Thank you. That's all I have for clarifying.
Thank you. And any council member, oh, John, council member, Eric?
I just had a quick question regarding the programs. I know a lot of those are years off or a year, two, three off. What happens if we don't adopt some of those programs? What does the agency do? Because we're saying things that maybe a council doesn't approve, what do we do at that point?
May I, Samantha? Great, thank you. Yes, that's an excellent question. So every year, the city is required to submit an annual progress report to the state. That's due in April of each That's due in April of each year, and it documents how the city is complying or progressing with the housing element programs. So HCD reviews that and can follow up as needed if there's any concerns or questions. But there is no immediate penalty if the city does not adhere to one of those target timeframes or deadlines. But HCD now has, now has an enforcement arm, not to sound scary, but they, they will follow up with the city and send a letter if they have questions about or any concerns with the progress being reported in those annual planning reports. But there is a dialogue and discussion that goes along with that. There wouldn't be any immediate consequences. HCD is looking for the city to be performing and, you know, it's doing its good faith effort in complying and implementing these programs, understanding the framework that cities have limited resources to be able to accomplish some of these relatively substantial programs.
Well, see, that's, that's kind of my concern, because we're, we're making a commitment through this plan. And you're basically binding future councils to a vote, where we've said we're going to take a certain action. And if the council does that, does not take that action, does that open us up to any state penalties, litigation, things like that? That's my question, because there's some things in here where really, basically doubling density in some areas, doubling height in some areas, and what if a future council doesn't want to do that? Have we committed to that? And what are the consequences for that?
Yeah, I, I'll say two things on that, is that HCD is also looking at ways to provide funding to support cities in implementing various programs. So they are trying to look at ways to assist jurisdictions to be able to take on some of these more significant programs. But ultimately, in terms of what the next steps are with, with HCD, is everything is reviewed, you know, on a case-by-case basis with HCD to evaluate whether the city is doing a good faith effort in terms of complying with the programs outlined.
Let me just say that as a legal matter, you aren't and can't bind a future city council in that way. But there would be potentially consequences if, if we start heading down the path and then a future council changes it. That's kind of my point here. Why would we plan something like that unless, are, are we absolutely required to put that in our plan? Or we just decide to do that? That's my question, because let's just say we don't want to do program whatever number. At this point, it's too late to amend it. If we won't meet the deadline.
I think if programs were going to be removed, we would need to be discussing that with HCD in the next couple of days and determining what we would do to, to backfill programs that are removed.
Yeah, because that's kind of my point here. We have a state that's losing population. I mean, census to census, year-over-year data, and they're putting more and more housing requirements on us. This plan requires at least a 25% density increase, which goes from 40,000 to 50,000 people, basically, if you just extrapolate the numbers. So within the next eight years, we're supposed to increase 25%. In the last 20 years, we haven't increased 1%. So I'm trying to figure out how we're binding ourselves to a 25% increase in eight years, and we haven't increased 1% in 20 years. We actually gone down in population over the past 20 years. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out the logic behind this, other than the state just says, we're going to make you do what we want you to do. And then I guess the technical question behind that, I'm not sure if you're aware of the initiative behind SB 9, which would basically make local zoning laws immune from state law. I don't know if you've read it yet, but it's a pretty clever way to get around all of this, because you can't be penalized for having a zoning. So I kind of like, when I see this plan, it's like, great. It's, it's a plan, but what's the actual teeth that they're, are they going to take grants away from us? Are they going to take state funding away from things? Are they going to fine us? What could they possibly? I don't, I don't understand what the actual implications are if we didn't meet it. And we, and let's say in some of these programs, we just say, let's say it does come to a vote, and a council says, no, we're not doing that. Well, I mean, I, I don't know from a legal standpoint, what the state can do to a city.
Right, so they can find your, your, your housing element to not be in compliance. So even say we move forward and certify, we have the housing element certified as is, we're found to be in compliance. That then allows the city to remain eligible for various grant and funding programs. So that is now considered to be the incentive arm of the housing element enforcement through HCD. So that's a benefit to the city, access to grants and funding related to housing and other programs. And then over the, over the years, during the annual progress report, if HCD at some point finds that the city is, is now not in compliance with implementation of, of programs, HCD now has the authority to be able to revoke compliance or, you know, compliance with your housing element certification, meaning that even if you're found in compliance today and you're eligible for grant funds and programs, maybe in five years, if you're not implementing any good faith, the housing element programs, they could revoke that determination of compliance, and then you would no longer be eligible for, for those programs and funding. Then there's the, you know, penalty, the stick side, which is where, you know, you, you can be subject to lawsuits or to fines from HCD, you know, particularly if, if the city is possibly being, you know, more of a bad actor and not acting in good faith in terms of compliance with the housing element programs.
Or a responsible actor to the people who represent. There's two sides to that.
Thank you. Thank you. John, okay, and? Yeah, okay, so my question is like the same thing. It's the grant, if, if we were complying with the HCD every year, how much the grant we can receive?
There's not a specific dollar amount allocated that gets funneled through these various programs. Some of them are competitive programs as well. So there's a variety of programs that are linked to housing element compliance.
So the guess is, so what's, have any range? So some, maybe zero, or maybe like a couple million?
Yes, yes, there can vary some specific, some specific programs. If you're doing it for a specific housing, affordable housing project, for instance, the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grants can be significant in terms of supporting actual housing development. So that's an example, but also the permanent local housing allocation as well that you are, that you are getting and using for pre-development services now, that, that's an example of one, too.
Okay. But, but for, for the, for the staff reported, this service was funded by, it's, I saw the 160,000 SB to planning grant and 150,000 lead grant. That's current, we get it, or?
That's correct, Vice Mayor, that's the grant that the city was awarded.
Awarded, the past, it's the past a couple year, or just? When was it, we can, when we will start to get this grant?
Past year.
Past year, so until, based on your reported, until December 31st, 2023, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if this year we not, like, accept the compliant, the HCD, so next year, this year or next year will be, have the some consequence, they take off the this grant?
That's a great question. So, so the HCD will review compliance on an annual basis for your annual planning reports. But it, at this point, if, if for some reason we do get stuck in the rezoning requirement being due on October 15th, you, you, you know, you would be hearing from HCD in September. Just to check in, I'm not saying, I mean, they would just want to check in and make sure you're moving forward with rezoning.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you, Jenny. So Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, we do have three comments for this item tonight. The first comes to us from Mitchell's side. And I will note that the legal sites and exhibits will not be read, but are available from the city clerk. The comment reads as follows. On behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, my office is submitting these comments for the City of San Gabriel's February 1st, 2022 City Council meeting for its draft 2021 to 2029 update to the city's general plan housing element. The Southwest Carpenters is a labor union representing 50,000 union carpenters in six states, including California, and has a strong interest in well-ordered land use planning and addressing the environmental impacts of development projects. Individual members of the Southwest Carpenters live, work, and recreate in the city and surrounding communities and would be directly affected by the project's environmental impact. SWRCC incorporates by reference all comments raising issues regarding the EIR submitted prior to certification of the EIR for the project. Moreover, SWRCC requests that the city provide notice for any and all notices referring or related to the project issued under the California Environmental Quality Act, California Public Resources Code 21,000, and the California Planning and Zoning Law. California Public Resources Code Sections 21092.2 and 21167F and Government Code Section 65092 requires, require agencies to mail such notices to any person who has filed a written request for them with the clerk of the agency's governing body. The city should require the use of a local skilled and trained workforce to benefit the committees, communities, economic development, and environment. The city should require the use of workers who have graduated from a joint labor management apprenticeship training program, approved by the State of California, or have at least as many hours of on-the-job experience in the applicable craft, which would be required to graduate from such a state-approved apprenticeship training program, or who are registered apprentices in an apprenticeship training program approved by the State of California. Community benefits such as local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements can also be helpful to reduce environmental impacts and improve the positive economic impact of the project. Local hire provisions requiring that a certain percentage of workers reside within 10 miles or less of the project site can reduce the length of vendor trips, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and providing localized economic benefits. Local hire provisions requiring that a certain percentage of workers reside within 10 miles or less of the project site can reduce the length of vendor trips, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and providing local economic benefits. As environmental consultants Nat Pogaman and Paul E. Rosenfeld note, any local hire requirement that results in a decreased worker trip length from the default value has the potential to result in a reduction of construction-related GHG emissions. And that concludes the three minutes. The next comment comes to us from Matt Gelfand and reads as follows. Californians for Homeownership is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization devoted to using legal tools to address California's housing crisis. You have been provided with a letter we submitted as part of our work monitoring local compliance with state housing element law. Based on our review of prior versions of the city's draft housing element, the city has not satisfied its obligations with respect to non-vacant sites listed in its housing element sites inventory. Perhaps more critically, the city omitted a critical component of its housing element, Appendix B, from the public agenda for this meeting. We encourage you to review our letter closely before moving forward with this item. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment comes from Salvador George, a special representative of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and reads as follows. Dear City Council Members, my name is Salvador George. I am a member of Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I am a resident of the City of San Gabriel. I live, work, and recreate in an area that will be affected by the sixth-cycle housing element update. I am contacting you because the environmental impacts of the sixth-cycle housing element update will affect me. The city should require housing projects developed pursuant to the housing element update to be built utilizing a local and skilled and trained workforce. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In a recent 2020 report titled, "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of a local state-certified apprenticeship program or a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollutant reductions. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements for private development projects in their city. Recently, the City of Hayward in Northern California adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into its general plan and municipal code. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impacts by minimizing vehicle miles traveled. The city should add local skilled and trained workforce requirements for future housing projects to address regional housing needs to benefit the city's economic development as well as the environment. Thank you. And that concludes the comments on this item.
So, thank you, Sharon. So I now close to the public hearing. And this, it's now time for council member deliberation and the discussion. Who would like to start? I saw the council member mentioned that.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to just explore a little bit more about the, the housing inclusionary program. I know we've talked about it, I think it's been almost two years now. How is that moving forward? I mean, are we, I thought I'd seen that it was going to be on the agenda the next month, and then it just seems to be, keep, keep moving it. Is that coming to fruition soon, or, you know, what is the status?
Yes, Councilwoman, this is Samantha. LWC has also been scoped to work on that component of the project, both the inclusionary housing and also the density bonus update. Staff wanted to focus on completing the housing element update project first. And so following the completion of this project, then, then LWC can move on to working on the ordinance.
So how soon do you think we can have the ordinance? Month, two months, six months?
I think potentially within the next six months. There will be a draft, and the draft has to be taken to the Planning Commission, and then it will come before the City Council.
Okay. And, and then my other question was regarding affordable housing. We do have one project, and that project in particular is the only project we have. What is the status with regards to grants and funding for that project? Because that was mentioned earlier with this housing element that, that would make us eligible for funding. Is that something that we're hoping to bring back? We really haven't spoken about it for a while now.
If this is the housing project that staff was originally working on at 405 South Gilmar. That was still in discussions with the COG on attaining the property. As part of a potential application that will be required for a housing project on that site, it would require a land use amendment, as well as a zoning amendment. So the potential of obtaining any grants would depend on getting through the public hearing process for that project and then making applications with whichever agency that the grant funding is coming from, whether it be the COG, SCAG, or the state.
So is that something that staff is working on or is that something, for example, LWC would also be assisting of?
That is currently a staff project. That is not a part of LWC.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think, yeah, I saw the council member Harrington, yeah.
Yeah, actually, I have no questions for, for staff. I just appreciate the, the effort that went into this. So thank you.
Well, Vice Mayor, if you don't have any questions, I'll move to approve unless you have a question.
Yeah, okay, like, but I think a question you already bring up, the like, we have project for the South Del Mar. So the, just one more question. It's, it's, how long will it take for this project? Because the way I think we did this approval, that's last year, right? So from middle of last year. So what's the status currently?
The status of the project, what the council maybe recalling was a status update that was provided by Economic Development a few months ago as to negotiations with, with the COG for the property. The city is still currently working with the COG on that matter. And so when an update and more information is available, then staff will be bringing that update back to the city council. But in the meantime, staff is still in discussions with the COG on that property.
Okay.
And I'll add, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to cut you off. I'll add to what Samantha said. Just that earlier in our meeting tonight, you approved an extension to the ENA with the related company so that we're continuing to work with them on that, on that project.
Okay, all right. Probably take the timeline, probably it's how, how long we, we have some, like, next step, you know?
The next step, we are working with the COG to be selected again. And we had a problem with their property selection process that they had to start it over. It was a problem on their side. So we are working with them to hopefully be selected to purchase that property again or to get into escrow. We never purchased it, but to get into escrow again, that closes in February. So we hope to, to hear back in early March and then we would bring to council more discussion sometime in late spring. It's going to be a several-year project. If we are able to make it work by the time we get grants, sometimes grants through the state take two or three rounds of, of, of applications. So it, it's a several-year project. But the next steps will be brought to the council in the late spring.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
So I think.
I'll, I'll move to approve. And I think I need to read it. Is that correct, Mark?
No, ma'am. You can just move the staff recommended action.
Okay, so I moved the staff recommended action.
I'll say it. Okay, motion has been made by Councilmember Mchenka and the second by Councilmember Harrington. Assistant City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Manchaca?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of three zero.
Next item, please.
We have no continued business this evening. The next item is new business item A, Analysis of Refinancing Options for the Citizens Business Bank Loan. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. Will Kohola Kula, Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. In two thousand and fourteen, the city took a loan for seven point eight million to construct the Public Berks facility. The terms of the loan required a cash collateral equal to the outstanding amount of the loan, which restricted the general funds cash. In order to release the collateral, staff has solicited and received offers to refinance the loan. Staff also asked the financial advisor firm, Urban Futures Incorporated, to analyze the city's loan options, solicit additional offers, and provide an analysis of the city's refinancing options. Michael Bush and Brandon Cifuri from Urban Futures Incorporated are here to provide a presentation of their analysis and recommendation regarding the city's refinancing options. Michael?
Thank you, Will. Good evening, Vice Mayor Ding and members of the City Council. Tonight, my colleague and I have a brief presentation which provides some in-depth details, thoughts, and strategy regarding the recommendation from a high-level perspective. And as a fiduciary to the city, we believe the recommendation presents the best approach to addressing several factors in our analysis, including several key points, which include the current financials of the city. And as some of the council members are aware, we've been working with Mark and Will for a while and tracking the city's tremendous progress in the positive direction. We're also aware of the estimated financial position fiscal year end, which again demonstrates the city's progress in the right direction. But I think what you're going to hear from us tonight is a more in-depth, longer view of the city's financial position and its ability to achieve the highest bond rating with the point of achieving the lowest cost borrowing. It's similar to what you would see with your FICO score when you want to go borrow something or money from a bank. And finally, the impact of these factors on future opportunities to finance other priorities of the council, which may include pension obligation bonds, affordable housing, or other things that you're talking about tonight as you go forward. The strategy recommendation suggests a slight delay through the end of the current fiscal year, at which time we believe the city's financials will report a material improvement when compared to prior years. At this point, I will turn the presentation over to my colleague, Brandon Confor, and he will walk us through it. Brandon, please begin.
Thanks, Mike, and good evening, mayors of the, members of the council and staff. If we could go to the next slide. Slide two, I will give a brief overview of the two thousand and fourteen loan. As Will had mentioned, it was a seven point eight million dollar agreement with Citizens Business Bank. And this has an interest rate of one point six percent. And as Will mentioned, it's collateralized with general fund cash equivalent to the loan amount. And this is currently invested in a certificate of deposit that earns zero point six percent. So that the net borrowing on, on this agreement is one percent, one point six less than zero point six. There's approximately six million currently outstanding under the agreement. And the city currently makes principal payments monthly of about twenty-one thousand. And there is a larger, what we would refer to as a bullet maturity, of five point two million due in January of two thousand and twenty-five. The two thousand and fourteen loan, per the terms, is subject to prepayment prior to the maturity without penalty. And per the original offer from the bank, there are options to extend the loan for two additional ten-year periods, two thousand and twenty-five, thirty-five, under the current terms. Next slide, please. So as stated in the staff report, we've been working with, with Will and evaluating the current options that we see to, to address this loan. And there are really, at a high level, three alternatives that the city could choose to pursue. Option one would be to pursue a refinancing during this current fiscal year. As we will discuss further, there have been multiple proposals made to the city for, for various terms and structures, including private placements as well as the public offering of securities. In addition, UFI has reached out to various lenders and solicited feedback. And, and, and many lenders have expressed some concern regarding the recent negative unrestricted fund balance that the city has had. And, you know, this both hinders the private placement of, of a loan with the, with the bank and the, the option to offer bonds via the public market, given that the city would have to go through a credit rating process. Option two, which is our proposed recommendation, is to reevaluate this refinancing next fiscal year. We believe that, you know, as Mike alluded to, the city has made great progress to date over the past couple fiscal years and that this improved position, in particular, the unrestricted fund balance, will result in a better story for the lenders and investors alike and that this would potentially result in more favorable terms for a refinancing. As I mentioned, there's a, a large maturity due in two thousand and twenty-five, which is, you know, a little under three years away. And, and we believe there's sufficient time before that occurs to, to, you know, continue to chop around and evaluate the options. And again, as I mentioned, there's an option to extend the loan if, if needed at that time. And option three would be to utilize the general fund cash to pay off the loan. And, you know, frankly, in, in this case, this would not meet the city's objective of improving liquidity or the unrestricted fund balance. And for that reason, we would not recommend such a move by the city. Next slide. So just a, a quick update, you know, as I had mentioned, there, there's been significant progress in the city's financial position. In particular, we noted in fiscal twenty-one, the surplus of the general fund and the fund balance of five point five million with a reduced negative unrestricted fund balance, which had come down from prior year down to negative five hundred eighty thousand. And, you know, in, in the agenda packet tonight, there, there was only, you know, some more good news on this front. You know, for the monthly budget update with a projected fund balance at the end of fiscal twenty-two of nearly twelve million dollars. This is significant with a positive net change of six point four million. As noted, it includes the recognition of ARCA funds of roughly five point nine million expected to be received. In addition, the revenues and transfers in for fiscal twenty-two are tracking higher than the amended budget. And cumulatively, these are all positive credit points that, again, we would believe would, would push the city's indicative credit rating into a, in a category. And in particular, as I'll talk about in the next slide, moving out of that negative unrestricted fund balance will, will be a significant step for the city. Next slide. So just to touch on the, the proposals received to date. So there, there were three offers that were presented to the city. On the left side, there were two private, private placement options, meaning these are loans from commercial banks. So there are, you know, it's a possibility to, to have a, a commercial bank lend money to essentially refinance the existing loan with citizens. These are indicative offers. They were received in November, I believe. And on the right side is a summary of the public sale option, which came from an underwriter to essentially sell bonds in the public market to investors via a security structure. So for the placement options, Proposal A included a five-year term that had a ten-year amortization. Essentially, this means that there's not a set plan for what happens after year five for a, a new amortization. So, you know, that, that was one concern with that one, as well as the loan fee that was presented. And the interest rate that was proposed had a minimum of four point two five percent. So again, that would be higher than the current rate of one sixty. There's a potential that the bank would like to collateralize this loan with potentially real property. And they indicated that they wanted a payment reserve. So you'd have to set aside some funds in a reserve account under this proposal. Under Plan B, there was a, an offer made of three ninety-five as an indicative rate in November that included escalating debt payments. And there was, you know, this was an indicative rate that was presented without much other detail. And, you know, again, I would allude to the rate being higher than that, that one sixty option that the city currently has. Under public sale, the underwriter had assumed a triple B issuer credit rating, which would equate to a triple B minus appropriations rating for a real property lease. And just to put that into perspective, that's a standard one notch that we see between an issuer rating and appropriations credits. What I did want to point out is that, that rating and that level is essentially at the bottom of an investment-grade credit category. And if the bonds were rated at this level for this loan, it would essentially stay with the city for future debt issuances. So, you know, under a potential pension obligation bond or other general fund issue for the city, this rating would sort of set the table for that. And the reason it's capped at this, what we would consider lower level, is again due to the, the negative fund balance. So the other financials of the city have improved. You get credit for that. But until there's a positive balance there, they will, they will cap the rating at this, at this level, if that makes sense. You know, further to that, the underwriter pointed out that they didn't think that the under, the city would receive bond insurance on this transaction, which would potentially increase the borrowing cost. And it did include terms up to thirty years. That's, you know, one other consideration. For a public sale, you could go out that long, you know, assuming the assets and support such a useful life, which in this case it would. And as of November, the interest rate all-in on this proposal was ranging from three thirty to three point five percent. Again, I would just point out that this was as of November, and we've seen some movement in the market since then. You know, in addition to this, we have talked with various other lenders who, again, expressed some concern over the city's position currently and the state audit findings, which, you know, one lender described as headline risk. And, you know, we really think that this point, while there's significant progress, we, we would say is we're not quite there as it somewhat hinders the city's ability to, you know, solicit a, a wide array of proposals and also prevents the city from getting a higher credit rating should, should you desire to go to the public market. Next slide, please. So we wanted to give a, a brief update as to, you know, what, what's going on in the municipal market. As I mentioned, those proposals were received by the city in November. And on this slide, we have a, just a brief overview of what's transpired in the market recently and, and, and to give you some context historically. So we have in the, in the top left, MMD, which is Municipal Market Data. It is the benchmark used for tax-exempt borrowings in our market. And we have the ten and thirty-year yields over the past couple of years. And you can see that we're well below the spike that occurred at the onset of the coronavirus pandemic. But if you noticed that little tail there at the end, we've started to creep up in rates really since December due to macroeconomic concerns, the, the Fed's project, estimated increase of rates in, in March and inflation concerns. And at the bottom of the table, at the bottom of the slide, you can see the, the rate since November twenty-fourth. And we're up across all points of the yield curve, anywhere from thirty to forty-five basis points, which is, you know, a fairly significant jump in the past month and a half or so. So again, we would just, you know, to give you some context to the prior slide, this would impact any potential borrowing offer that was received in November. You know, the good news is, I think that if you look at that top right graph, just to give you the context, we are the, still at a historically low level, albeit not as low, right? So the blue bars represent the range of rates across the curve for the past fourteen years or so, since two thousand and eight. So the, the, that's the blue bar and the green line is where we are today. So you'll notice thirty-year rates and the triple A municipal market data are still sub-two percent, which represents, you know, a point. You know, a point that is near the historic low point of of where we've been in recent history. So, you know, with that, I think that's just another factor that we want, you know, we are looking at it. We would continue to monitor as we look at options for refinancing this loan. Next slide, please. So just to wrap up here and, you know, we're happy to take questions. I think, as Mike had mentioned, our recommendation would be to maintain the current terms of this loan agreement. And to continue to monitor the opportunities for refinancing. Again, the improved general fund financials, we believe, will present a better credit story to lenders and investors, rating agencies. And result in more favorable financing terms, not just for this loan, but as Mike mentioned, just thinking down the road, big picture. Opening the door for future low cost financing for the city. Should it be a pension obligation bond or other, other general fund borrowing? We strongly feel that it's, it's a, we want to, we want you to put your best foot forward with the credit story. We think that, you know, being a little more patient with this will, will support that. And, you know, to further that, we, we believe there's sufficient time to evaluate these options, given the maturity that's due in two thousand twenty five. Giving us, you know, a little under three years to do that. And there's an option to extend the loan if needed. Under the current term, should we get to that point in two thousand twenty five and not have a sufficient offer? So, you know, with that, I'll conclude my remarks. And Mike and I are here and able to answer any questions with regard to this, this analysis.
So. Okay, okay. Thank you, Brendan and Michael. Does any council member have the factual question for staff clarify that report? Nice. None, right? Okay. Chief City Clerk, please read them. Any comments received?
No comments for this item.
It's now time for the council deliberation and the discussion. Who would be like to start it?
I'll start. Without that many of us.
Okay, three hours of this.
First of all, I just wanted to thank staff and city manager. This has been an ongoing issue as far back as two thousand fourteen. So as Councilmember Harrington mentioned in a previous agenda item, you know, this committed us. This council, even though it's been about eight years now, and I know it's, there are tough discussions. But I just wanted to just thank everyone for their ongoing efforts. And sometimes it feels like it's not taking place, but I know it's taking place, obviously, with this presentation here tonight. You know, we keep looking at options, you know, timing is everything. I know, I like the fact that you're also looking at the pension obligation, not just the loan. Those are also areas that we, I know I've been concerned and my colleagues are left, I've been concerned with too. So anyway, those just aren't my comments. I mean, I'm ready to move, I'll wait for the other two to make any further comments.
I don't have any comments, so. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Harrington.
Well, if you don't have any comments either, Vice Mayor, I'll move to. Do you have something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So. The total, we currently have the recommendations, it's option one, option two, option three, right? Some, some condition I saw the two, but for the staff report paid to the option one, it's. Just okay, pursue the refinance during this current fiscal year. So I just want to see the, what's the difference for the three option? And so, oh, how is it effective our, the city evaluation for the future? Like, stay every year they want to evaluate.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Ding. That's a great question and I'd be happy to answer that. And Mike and Brandon, if you have something to add afterwards. But we gave a lot of consideration to two things when we made this recommendation. And as we're looking at the public works law, we're looking at both the state auditor and the list that we're on. And trying to get off of that high risk list and go into the, hopefully in the future, into the better category. But certainly out of the high risk and into the moderate risk. And the second thing we're looking at is trying to make sure that when we are ready to do future financings, whether that's a pension bond. To help smooth out some of our future purse costs. Or in a couple of years, you know, if we continue to do the hard work that we're doing. We may be in a position to build a police station or some other facility. And we would look to do some sort of financing for that. And so for that first item with the state auditor. Now that we have a, or at the end of this fiscal year that we're in now, which will end on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. At the end of this fiscal year, we project that we'll have almost twelve million dollars in our general fund. And half of that, roughly six million of that will be unrestricted, which means that it's free for use for an emergency fund. Or for any other needs of the city. And half of that six million dollars would be, another six million dollars would be the restricted fund. That is tied to the collateral or the citizens business bank loan. For the state's purposes, our debt ratio is very, very low compared to all other cities. And so by paying off the public works loan, it gets us like a tenth of a point in one of the categories that we have the highest point ranking in. Already. So that does not help us to pay off the loan from the state auditor perspective. The biggest change for us from the state auditor perspective is having a positive fund balance. And with the six million dollars, we will have either right at or slightly more than the seventeen percent minimum. That the GFOA and other agencies recommend as the minimum. So with that seventeen percent minimum, we will have about half of the points in that category, which will, which will change quite a bit. But none of that changes where our biggest issues are, which is our OPEB funding. And our retiree health costs in some other areas. So this public works loan, whether we pay it off now or in a year from now, when our credit is better. It does not have a material effect on a state auditor's rankings. But where it does have an effect is for our future financings. And this is something I learned as part of this process. And I did not know this beforehand. But when we do the credit rating with Standard and Poor's or the other rating agencies. We pay them to come in and do a deep lot dive, look into our finances. They check the history and how we've been doing on our financing, our budgeting, excuse me, and where our fund balance is. They meet with management, they could meet with council, and they put all of that into an analysis and they create a narrative. And they boil all that down into what a credit rating is for the city. And just to give you an example, one of our neighbors, Monterey Park, they just did a very large financing. And we're able to achieve a very high ranking because of the fact that they have a fund balance that's high. It's shown to be that way and they have the retirement tax similar to what we have. So they are very, very good credit risk. But the thing that I just learned was that even though we've shown huge progress. And even though we have just a very small unrestricted fund balance and a negative unrestricted fund balance. And we have almost six million dollars of a restricted fund balance. With the way that Standard and Poor's ranks us, the highest that we could achieve is a triple B. Which is a, as Brandon stated in his presentation, is just below or just above junk bond status. It's just the bottom of investor grade. And the issue with that is, is if tomorrow or the end of the fiscal year, that changes for us. And we now have a seventeen percent reserve, Standard and Poor's will not come back and change that rating overnight to what our rating would be. Had we got raided after we had the better financial position. They might rate it up half a person, I mean, one of those ratings. So it might go from a, you know, a B minus to a B or a B to a B plus. But it's not going to go to the ranking that we would have had we waited a year and had a full. End of the year annual financial report that is approved by our auditors that shows that seventeen percent fund balance. So what little benefit we would have to refinance that loan today to agree, create a tiny percentage point with the state auditor. Could cost us several hundred thousand to maybe more than a million dollars in the long run. If we're talking about, you know, several million dollars with the financings in the future. So to me, that was the biggest reason to make that recommendation of, of not moving forward. And because of the fact that we don't need the liquidity like we needed a year or two ago. We're in a, in a position to actually sit back and make a choice that makes the most financial sense. Rather than having to react because of our bad financial position. So I hope that answers your question, Vice Mayor Ding. Anything I could have added to that, Mike or Brandon, to clarify that?
No, Mark, I, I think you answered the question well. There's only a couple of things I would add. Vice Mayor Ding, I'm very familiar with state audit reports. We work with a number of clients that have them. They do not recognize the fact that the city has a tax associated with pensions in their audit. They just look at your liability. So that's significant. I think what Brandon pointed out in the presentation is also important. That the delay of this recommendation to refinance, I think will bring a lot more competition to the city to compete for your business. And will generate a better rate. And we, we've worked on it with you staff for a number of years and talked to a number of different banks. The most common thing I've heard in the last two years is, well, let's wait to see what happens next year. Let's wait to see what happens next year because the trend was improving each year. And I think their, their expectations are going to be fulfilled with the conclusion of this fiscal year. And then my last comment, I don't want to underscore the importance of having bond insurance. So if you get into a category, it's more likely you could get bond insurance, which raises your credit rating to investors to a double A status. That will be significant for refinancing this deal, but would be most significant for a pension deal. And that will make, to Mark's point, that's when you start talking about the millions of dollars of difference in debt service. By waiting to your financial position to improve.
Okay, yeah, that's, I bring in the next question. It's how is the refinance connect to the pension bond, the refinance? Is it, if we do the like this, do the, for the, this public role, public work room to refinance? Is it help to help us to get the pension bond, the refinance?
So I'll, I'll, again, I'll take a stab at that and then Mike jump in. If we had not been in a position by the end of this fiscal year to have a positive fund balance. Then the answer would be different because we could refinance the public works loan, remove the collateral requirement. And that would give us that positive fund balance that we would need. We would still probably have to wait to show an end of the year financial report that has that positive fund balance. And then we could get that ranking or rating from S and P and we would be able to get pension bonds. The issue right now is if we do that financing now for the public works loan, we lock in that, that ranking or that rating with standard and poor. So we would be locking it in at that lower rate now. And we would have to wait several years before they raise that to the rate that we would get if we otherwise had that fund balance that we'll have at the end of the year. So it would be harmful right now if we took one of the, if we did a bond placement. If we went for one of the private placements, that, that doesn't affect our credit rating because we wouldn't have to get a credit rating. But that would be harmful in the fact that we would pay more in the way of interest than we would need to, because we have that liquidity now.
Yeah, based on the last year, the state, the report, they criticize our, this is public loan too, that's for my understanding. So, yeah. I definitely, my mind, I, I hope they either pay off the loan or refinance it or have the, have the bond for the, for the public loan. So I think it should be logical to like, hope for next state audit, they remove this, at least remove this factor, right?
I will remind the council and the community, whoever is watching this. That unfortunately, the state auditor is over a year behind in their ranking system. So I will remind that in August or September, when they come out with their ranking, it's going to be reflective of last fiscal year. So anything we do now, it'll be two years before we see the effect in the state auditor's rankings. But all of that to say, I feel your concern because of the fact that they pointed that out so highly. But I'll just tell you that we have changed our position quite a bit over the last two years. And if nothing else, if we wait until we close out our fiscal year, we can go back and get new offers or proposals. From banks or, or even talk to the bond issuers to see about getting a new proposal. And it won't, we don't have to wait years. We don't have to wait until two thousand twenty five to get those new proposals. But I, I feel and I, I trust the advice we're getting, that just waiting could help us in both aspects. In the aspect of a favorable loan rate, if we want to refinance a public works loan. And in a better ability to do future financing.
Mr. City Manager, if you might, if I make one more closing comment?
No, no.
Great, thank you. So Vice Mayor Ding, I, I think there's one point that you're, you're reaching towards, and I think it's a good one. At the end of the fiscal year, assuming we will review this credit again. And we will also look at other priorities the council may have. I'm aware of the council's concern with its pension liability. We would look and prepare a credit assessment to see if it made sense at that point to refinance the loan. If it would help with the financing of the pension liability as well. So there's still one more analysis step that would go forward to see if the timing for issuing the refinancing of that bond would improve the overall viability. And financial performance of the city in terms of its debt service obligation. So that is a step that will take place and we will come back to you at that point with a recommendation, if you decide to go forward with either one of them. And we will present what we think is in the best interest of the city as a fiduciary municipal advisor. It's possible that the rating agency may see a refinancing that more favorable. Because it will increase your fund balance, available fund balance. That's something we will assess when we look at the overall credit and strategy for dealing with both issues.
Yeah, I understand. It's, it's the way refinancing is just like keep like higher the, the fund balance. So we still have that based on the report, like almost twelve million, right? If we pay off the loan, so only we have the, the six million, the fund balance. So what's the, like, I just want to find for my logically say, see the. Because the, if we refinance the loan or bond for the public work loan. I don't think it's really help for our pension bond, pension loan, the, the refinance. So if, if like my question is, is it help or not really help? If not really help, so I think maybe get rid of the, this question wrong. So it's better than the refinance. So that's why I saw, you know, yeah. If it really help our for future like pension liability, so maybe, yeah, do the refinance, it's, 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 it's better, you know? That's my, my concern, you know?
I agree, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Okay.
I like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay. The motion has, has been made by council member Machanga and second by, second by council member Harrington. And Assistant Clerk, please take the ball.
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Hi.
Council member Manchaca.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Ding.
Hi.
Motion passes by vote of three zero.
Next item, please.
Declaration of vacancy of council member office in consideration of process to fill vacancy. And I will be presenting this item for you. The resignation of Mayor Liao on January twenty-seventh creates a second vacancy on the city council for a term that also ends at the certification of the general election in November twenty twenty-two. And requires the city council to again consider available options under state law for filling the vacancy. Government Code Section three, six, five, one, two, B provides that city council shall fill the vacancy through either of the following two options. One, the city council may appoint someone to complete the unexpired term of office within sixty days from the commencement of vacancy. Or two, call a special election to fill the vacancy, which shall be held on the next regularly established election date, not less than one hundred fourteen days from the call of special election. If option one is chosen, an appointment must be made by March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. To proceed with appointment to fill the vacancy, the city council may choose to appoint an individual with or without an application and interview process. Option one A, should the city council wish to set forth an application and interview process, applications could be solicited with the same schedule and deadlines. As the recruitment for the first vacancy or an additional schedule for the second vacancy could be utilized. Option one B, the city council could choose to make an appointment for the second vacancy without an application process. Council members would submit names to the city clerk and subsequently vote in an open meeting. For the candidate of their choice with three votes needed to make the appointment if done by resolution. Should the city council choose this option, staff will bring back a resolution memorializing the method for city council consideration. If option two is chosen, the available special election dates and costs associated are detailed in the staff report. Due to the cost involved with holding an election and the delay in seating a replacement council member. Staff is recommending again that the city council follow the appointment process called out in option one. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council, one, accept resignation of Mayor Liao with regrets effective January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. And two, adopt resolution number twenty-two dash twelve, adopting a process for filling a vacancy on the city council by appointment. And City Manager Lazaretto now has some comments.
I think that covered it, Sharon. You did a great job.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mark. Does any council member have the factual question for staff to clarify the, the report?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to just point out that in the resolution, there is the amended version. For, let's see, C four of the resolution where an appointment will be approved by resolution or a simple majority by minute.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to butt back in, but I'm remembering what Chief City Clerk Clark was so nice to point out to me that I, forgot I wanted to say. I wanted to tell the council and the community that. We intend to hold those, if, if council goes with the recommendation from staff, we would intend to hold the interviews in public. We know we'd love to have been in, in public and in open for the last two years, but haven't been able to. But certainly for something as important as interviewing future council members, we feel like that should be done. Live with people being able to watch. So we're looking at either the grapevine room or video room. Or potentially admission playhouse, if, if we need that much room to spread out. So, my recommendation would be that if we follow that process on the ninth and the tenth of, of February, that those meetings would be in person. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mark.
That concludes my clarifying questions, but I do have comments after public comment.
Okay. So. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have four comments on this item.
Thank you.
The first comes to us from Norma Dovolos, reads as follows. Is there a way to meet the applicants and ask them questions? In fact, we should have a forum where residents can meet and ask questions from those running for office. That concludes that comment. The next comes to us from Sandy Roscoe, Executive Director of the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce and reads as follows. Good evening, Mayor Ding and Council Members Harrington and Manchaca. I am writing to request that the council's interviewing of candidates to fill the two vacancies on our current city council. All discussions surrounding the selection of two new council members and the voting by Mayor Ding, Council Member Harrington and Council Member Manchaca. In the final selection of our new city council members, he held in person at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. I know we all agree that this is an extremely important time for our city. And the selection of new qualified council members is of the highest priority. I know we also agree that the process should be as open and transparent as possible. Conducting the interviews, discussions and voting leading to selection in person at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. Adds an important layer of transparency and allows for more community engagement. We definitely want as much community engagement as possible as we select two new city council members. That will be helping to make crucial decisions between now and November twenty twenty-two. Including decisions regarding budget and labor negotiations. A recent council member, a recent council meeting in December twenty twenty-one was safely and successfully held at the Mission Playhouse. We respectfully request that all council meetings surrounding the selection of two new council members. Also be held at our San Gabriel Mission Playhouse and be open to the public. If for some reason this is not possible, we request that all proceedings be televised or live streamed so we can all see the proceedings, not just hear them. Thank you for your time and attention. The next comment. Is from Alexis Salamanca and reads as follows. Good evening, Mayor Ding and Council Members Harrington and Manchaca. I am writing to request that the council's interviewing of candidates to fill the two vacancies on our current city council. All discussions surrounding the selection of two new council members and the voting by Mayor Ding, Council Member Harrington. And Council Member Manchaca in the final selection of our new city council members, he held in person at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. Conducting the interviews, discussion and voting leading to the selection of the qualified council members are of the highest priority. And it deserves transparency to all of our residents and businesses in our community. It is extremely important that the decision is based on experience, integrity, honesty, and not just a personal agenda. A recent council meeting on December twenty twenty-one was safely and successfully held at the Mission Playhouse. We respectfully request that all council meetings surrounding the selection of two new council members. Also be held at our San Gabriel Mission Playhouse and be open to the public. If for some reason this is not possible, we request that all proceedings be televised or live streamed. So we all can see the proceedings, not just hear them. Thank you. Our last comment comes from Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunez, here Commission Chair, and reads as follows. To the city council and Mayor Chin Ho Liao. The news of Mayor Liao's resignation came as a shock, knowing how much he sincerely enjoyed his role on the city council. I would like to thank Mayor Liao for his dedication and service to the residents of San Gabriel. He has represented not only the interests of the Asian American community, but also ensured that the voices of other underrepresented groups are heard and respected. I personally appreciate his support and advocacy for the formation of the here commission. And hope that his legacy of representing diversity and inclusion is remembered. When decisions are made to fill the vacant seats on the city council. Thank you, Mayor Liao, for also bringing joy, humor and infectious energy to all of the city functions. I am sure that it was very difficult, but the pandemic has shown us that decisions that improve our own health and wellbeing are necessary and correct. Congratulations and thank you for nine years of service. And that concludes the comments.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. It's now time for the councilman, council deliberation and discussion. Who like to start it? Okay, so.
Yes, so I, I actually, I'm okay with the resolution, but I wanted us to have the opportunity to discuss the process. Which I, you know, has been somewhat discussed here, but I wanted to just, to share my thoughts with, you know, the remaining council and see if we can kind of reach some agreement and that would be helpful for the staff. And so I'll go ahead and, and please, you know, let me know what your thoughts are. First of all, the venue, I, I know the city manager had mentioned the arbor or video room, but I really believe. You know, we need a bigger space. We need a space where there's enough social distancing. Because people are still concerned with COVID, even though the, the numbers are going down, there's still great concern. And I, I believe that this has to be done in person. And I believe that the Mission Playhouse is a great venue. There's ample space for the residents and the media. Media is very interested in this, especially the Chinese media. With the recent resignation of, of Mr. Lau. Also avoid the crowding, so there's plenty of space, you know, you can have ten spaces in between everyone if you like, but, I, I think people will feel more comfortable, whether you're a masked person or not, it's just a bigger space. And then lastly, I, I, if we do have it at the Mission Playhouse, I will just insist that we work on the sound system. At, at the meeting in December, Council Member Harrington and I, we got to sit next to each other. And we could not understand our colleagues that were sitting at the same table, but just across the way. So something was going on with the sound system and if we're going to be doing interviews. We need to make sure that the applicant is being listened to and could be heard, not just for us as council members, but also for, for the audience. So, that was my only concern about the Mission Playhouse, but I'm, I'm sure that's something we can address. Test it out in advance, but there's no reason why, you know, council members can't even hear what's going on or even hear the question. And so I would assume that the three of us would be up there. Perhaps the city manager could be the moderator, so the mayor or vice mayor wouldn't have to worry about timing or anything like that because I think we have to be very deliberate here. The, the other suggestion I wanted to say is that I predict there's going to be about fifteen to twenty applicants, if not more. Especially with the resignation of, of Mr. Lau. And so I would like to suggest that we pare down the applications and, one idea I have, and again, to, to hear suggestions of, of the other two. Is that as council members, you know, if we have, let's say fifteen applicants. Then we would pick fifty, fifty percent, let's say if it's seven point five and you just round up to eight applications. We would pick eight of the fifteen, not ranking them, but just say that we'd like to hear more about them. We just have the paperwork at that point. And then, and we would do this in open session. And, and then whoever gets two or more votes, because that's what you need is at least two votes. Then they would move forward and they would be part of the live interview. I would, you know, based on in the past with the commission, here commission in particular. I suspect that out of, let's say eight, ten applicants, you know, maybe there'll be six to seven, five to six, whatever those numbers are, that would get at least two votes. And then we as council could really focus on those as opposed to twenty. And even for the public to have to focus on twenty, let's just kind of pare it down so we can ask more direct questions. And then each council member could be, could have two to three questions that they can ask. We can set some parameters so it limits it maybe ten minutes per council member per applicant. So it doesn't become long-winded and I know the public gets a little frustrated to, too, if we just kind of keep going on and on, you know, an hour or one candidate. And I just think I, I just want to make sure that this, this gives the council members and the, and the public an opportunity to really experience a more meaningful process as opposed to just, you know, just kind of throwing it out there. I believe we have six applicants now, is that the case? So I, I know there's more coming. I know there's more coming. So hopefully, I think, I think someone had mentioned that on Friday, we would kind of maybe get the first batch and then we get more. After the, the application deadline, we already have a meeting scheduled, I believe it was February ninth. And tenth, is that the case? Or what was the February ninth and tenth, we've already locked in and, and then, you know, council deliberates, everything has to be in public. I'm not sure where the confusion was. We made that very clear. Everything has to be done in public. But, you know, we, we go through a deliberation, we pick the two, we can stall them that night or we can do it on our February fifteenth. Meeting, but I think we just need to move forward, but we need to move forward. With being mindful and with, with some deliberations, otherwise are, are being, be much more thoughtful in the process than just, you know, spending hour than hours, you know, twenty applicants. So anyway, so I'm just throwing that out to council. I'm okay with the resolution and approving it, but I, I do want to spend some time about the process because this is it. This is our time to, to have that discussion. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Mchanka. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ding. Yeah, I, I like the idea of actually hearing from everybody. Just in my experience. I think some people may not present resumes or paperwork well or even applications well, but then in person they present really well. Sometimes people aren't as good at putting things on paper and vice versa. I think some people do really well on paper and then don't interview well and, and don't present well. So it's, I, I'm looking for somebody that does both. Or, or, you know, at, at least we might find some people that resumes may not look great, but they present really well and say, okay, that, that's a viable candidate and they would have already been pre-selected out just on paper. So, me personally, I'd rather be thorough and kind of listen to everybody. We can put a time limit if that's the concern. Like say ten minutes per candidate and then make a, like we said, around once selection. But at least an initial interview and then maybe a more in-depth interview of the finalists. But me personally, I'd like to see that. I've seen several people over the years that I think may not look good on paper, but would be, you know, do really well in an interview and, and potentially get selected because of the, the way they answer questions on the spot. So I mean, I, I, I would err on the side of interviewing people that are willing to apply. So, that's just my thoughts on that. And as far as the resolution, I'm fine with it as well. I think this is a very important decision. I mean, one council member was very important, but it's magnified with two council members that we have to replace. And this is, we need people with experience and, and sometimes resumes show that and sometimes their speaking is, we'll show that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. So, yeah, okay. First of all, my question, it's for the, right now, we have the two seats. So when we make a decision, so how can, is it any way we have to, dedicate the, the, each applicant to replace the, the council member pool or Mayor Liao, it's dedicated, the procedure or just go ahead, whatever top two will be, become the new council member?
Vice Mayor Ding, no, there's no reason that we would need to, to designate for one or the other seat. The only reason we would need to do that if one of the terms was longer than the other term. If it was ending at a different time, but for our purposes, no, there's no reason to, to differentiate between the two applicants. Or, or, or appointees, excuse me.
Okay.
Or have a separate application process for each of the appointees.
Okay, I, I understand that applicant may be, we're processing it's an easy way to same application is fine, I agree. Just wanted to know, so actually it's a top two will be become the council member, no matter which one. Council, he replace it. Right?
You have a lot of flexibility to decide how that process works. If you're doing it the way that council's discussing tonight, it seems like that. But if you don't come up with two candidates. But if you don't come up with two candidates during that interview process, you could vote at the end of that process to reopen the application process and try and get more applications. You don't have to use an application process to appoint somebody. If the three of you knew somebody who would be qualified and the three of you could agree on that person, you can have somebody else, you know, completely not in that list. So you have some flexibility, but the way that you're talking about doing it, it seems like the top two that you all would agree on would end up being for both seats.
Okay, and, okay, thank you, Mark. And we have, for schedule, we're on the February ninth and the February tenth. So, okay, each applicant, we give to them how many, how many times for the interview? And I just want to estimate each day, it's how many applicant we can interview?
At this point, we won't know, because we don't know how many applications we will have. I think we've received seven through today, we had one more that came in this afternoon. And we had an eighth that was disqualified, but if we were going to do it now, we would probably, you know, with the seven applications, we would probably do, you know, twenty to or so minutes. And then if council wanted to bring folks back for a second night, we could do that. And we could do first round on one night and the second round on the second night. If we ended up with fifteen applications, as Councilwoman Minchaka pointed out, and you don't use a process to whittle that down, then we would split them in half and do half one night and half the other night, like we do with commission interviews, and try to come up with a reasonable amount of time. If we ended up with, and if we don't decide on the process tonight, and we ended up with, you know, thirty or forty applications, then we would have council meet on the ninth to talk about what process we use. And then we would figure that out at that point. So I hate to give you a wishy-washy answer, but it's really going to depend on how many applications you receive, and we won't know until the eighth. If it's anything like people who apply for jobs, things look dreary for us as we're looking at the recruitment list right up until the night of, and then we end up with, you know, ten applicants who turn it in at midnight on the night it's due. So we have a good list so far for council candidates, but, you know, we could double or triple that between now and then.
Okay, yeah, okay. So I, yeah, I also agree that hopefully, sometimes I wish more people to apply, but sometimes also the timeline, we need a control too. But I also agree to, like, give it to all the applicants, have the opportunity, the in-person interview. It's also helpful as the, to make a decision too. So always, thank you, Mark, so based on the how many applicant, then we moving forward, so we, how we pick up the time or how many applicant. If for forty, maybe, maybe we need to think about it, right? If less than twenty, probably, I think, maybe tonight, maybe it's maybe possible, right? Yeah, to, to, to do the interview, based on the, so that's why I asking the how long the interview time. So if like we give it to each person like a total like fifteen minutes, so each hour like for applicant, we can listen, right? So, so maybe we can set up this kind of rule, how many minutes for the interview? So can like help to, if we have the more applicant, yeah.
If it pleases the council, we, we have the meeting set up for the ninth and the tenth. We can agenda those and have the agendas ready to go. And then we can see what, what things look like, and we can propose a process. Staff can propose a process for the ninth and the tenth. And if it ends up being some, you know, huge number, then we'll just have the ninth, the discussion will be, you know, how, how to whittle it down rather than actually setting up interviews. But if we end up with fifteen, as an example, we can set up some quick interviews and then have a second night of, of going more in-depth with those people that council want to hear from again.
Okay, good idea. Yeah, thank you, Mark. All right, so.
Yeah, just sort of follow up on that. So regarding the applications, would we receive those as council? Like, when would we receive those?
So our plan, Councilman Harrington, right now is to, whatever we receive Friday afternoon, late afternoon, we would provide to the council and to the public as well, they would go up on the website. As we have said from the beginning, this is all going to be a public process. So whenever we receive through the end of the week, you will receive. And then depending again on how many we receive the following, over the weekend and Monday and Tuesday, we would either send those to council at the end of the day on Monday, and then again at the end of the day on Tuesday, or we would hold them until Tuesday if there are only a few, and give those to council. So you'll get them, we won't wait until Tuesday night at five o'clock when the application process closes to send those all to council. At a minimum, you'll have whatever we receive by the end of the week, by the end of the week.
So we'll get a batch Friday, and then hopefully a batch Monday, and then a batch Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
And that also includes the public, the public will be able to have access to that same batch.
That's exactly right. Whenever we present to council, we will post on the city's website.
Okay, so actually, we, on the Friday, so we'll see the people already submit up application. Okay, so we can, yeah, that's, we need more time to, to read it, to see what are the application. So if the end of the February, it's, it's Tuesday, maybe probably Monday, Monday, Tuesday, still have a new applicant. So we only have the time, it's early morning on the, on a Wednesday, right? Can read it, okay. All right, it looks like time is too short, okay. All right, so yeah, maybe we can, like a suggestion, it's Friday, we give, hopefully, we can see the all the applicants that recently submitted, and, yeah, okay, all right. So.
Well, then I'll move to approve the resolution.
I'll start here. Okay. A motion has been made by Councilmember Machanga, and the second by Councilmember Harrington. Assistant City Clerk, please take the ball.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Minchaka?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ding?
Aye.
Motion passes by a vote of three zero.
Next item, please.
City Council's selection of Vice Mayor. City Attorney Lemieux has recommended that we hold this item over for a future agenda, so I will turn it over to him now for some comments.
Sure, we talked about this a little bit at the beginning. I think when this was placed on, there was a little uncertainty about, about how to, how to chair the meetings, but, you know, by, by the government code, in the absence of the mayor, the chair position passes to the Vice Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tim, which is what we've done. And I think this, after talking with Mark, the staff's intention at this point is, provided the City Council agrees with this, is to sort of hold off on, on changing the officer positions around until we have a full city council present, and then we can kind of sort things out rather than do it, and then, you know, possibly have to do it again or what have you. So that's the suggestion anyway from staff. You can let us know if you've got a different idea.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that as well. I think it makes sense, simply because we couldn't have a meeting with two council members, so there would be no way for a Vice Mayor to do anything.
Yeah, okay.
Very unusual situation.
One council member.
You can handle it, Vice Mayor Ding.
Yeah, I just think you have to come to every meeting now, Tony.
Okay. So, yeah, we, we current, so our city recently still the Vice Mayor and the two council member, right? Okay, all right, so.
We've gotten a lot of work done tonight, so thank you for your leadership, Vice Mayor Ding.
Thank you. So, so, so we just, item C, just, like.
Yeah, we're not looking for any action on this item.
Yeah, okay, no action for the item C, okay. All right, so, yeah, it's good for, like, if we have the new council member coming, come on the ball, or do the reorganization, it's more better, yeah, okay. The next item, please.
No public comment for this section, thank you.
Okay, and then number nine, it's the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council, just two quick items for everybody tonight. First, wanted to point out that we have put a short Lunar New Year video up on the city's YouTube channel. And I want to thank the council for doing a great job of welcoming everybody for Lunar New Year, and also staff for putting it together in such short notice as we unfortunately had to pivot from a live Lunar New Year celebration to a virtual one. So if you go to YouTube and search for San Gabriel, you'll see our channel, and it's, it's up on that channel. And secondly, I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Jennings Nunes for her acknowledgement by the San Gabriel Education Foundation. She was the past president of staff, and they have honored her for Black History Month for her contribution to not only the community, but her contributions to the medical industry as well. So she is our Here Commission Chairwoman, and just wanted to point that out to the community and to congratulate her. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council.
I always forgot I'm muted, okay, sorry. So next item, it's council comments and conference meeting reports.
Well, I'll start. I just wanted to say that the city manager took both of my items I was going to share. First of all, about the video that you now know, but I also wanted to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year of the tiger. Maybe we all have much prosperity, good health, and being high spirits this year. Second, also congratulate chairperson of the Here Commission, Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunes, for being recognized by the San Gabriel Education Foundation. And I'm just going to read a little something about her background, as the city manager already mentioned a little bit about her. But Dr. Jennings Nunes received her medical degree from Harvard Medical School and has been a practicing obstetrician-gynecologist for over twenty-seven years. As a parent and esteemed member of our community, she is an inspiration by her achievements, both professionally and personally. She leads an incredibly cool life and service to others, and we are grateful for her dedication and efforts to benefit others. And that is a quote from the San Gabriel Educational Foundation, so congratulations, Dr. Jennings. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Harrington.
Thanks, Senator Ding, yeah, just, I agree, thank you for a good productive meeting tonight, and Happy New Year to everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrington. Yeah, thanks, the, first of all, thanks to Mark and the staff and Sharon Keys. It's helped me to, first time conduct the council meeting. I, actually, until right now, I'm still a little nervous, but, but it's good things so far, we're on time, right? Okay, before the nine, okay, so, yeah, and, yeah, okay. It's, it's a very productive, and, yeah, thanks the staff's hard work to support it, the meeting, and hopefully, next meeting, I can more smoothly, okay? Be careful that the mic are muted and muted, right? Okay, and, yeah, and, and definitely is a congratulation to Dr. Chesley Nunes and got this recognition, recognized, okay, from the San Gabriel Education Foundation. Yeah, and also I thanks her, the, like, our Here Commission, the leadership, right now, we're a new committee. Yeah, and then it's definitely, it's today, it's Lunar New Year, first days. I remember last, even last year, we council meeting, one of the council meeting, also it's New Year, Lunar New Year, the New Year days. So Happy New Year, and everybody healthy and happiness, and we also cut, also wealthy, okay, hope for everybody, okay? Because the, actually, right now, inflation is higher, if you, everybody want to be wealthy too, okay? And, and, so, so here I also use the Chinese to say, okay. Yeah, thanks, everybody, so, and year of a tiger, hopefully, everybody, it's a good year of tiger, even hopefully our city, it's have a good year, the good, the, for the year of tiger. And, and, yeah, okay, that's my comments. So next one, it's closed section. Chief City Clerk, has any public comments has been received?
No comments for this item, thank you.
So. We will now recess, recess to the closing section. The closing section report will be printed at the next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, February fifteen, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M.
So thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, so we're going to stop the recording now, and everybody can jump off, and then maybe we'll take a five-minute health break, and our labor attorney online, and we can resume closed session.